... to provide us with an update on project momentum as well as an update on FCPS academic performance. That portion of the program will highlight graduation rates, SOL performance, and where our high schools rank in relation to other schools internationally. We have two hours budgeted for this work session, and I will take questions after each section. So we will begin with project momentum. Thank you, Mr. Greenfeller, for being with us, and also thank you for taking the time to meet with individual board members if they so desired. I had a meeting with you. I encourage other of my colleagues who have not done that to do that. I found it most informative, so thank you so much, and you may begin.
Well, thank you for having us. We're excited to be here this afternoon. I did get through all the board members, so we had a great meeting with every single one of you, and it was very enlightening, and hopefully that will make this afternoon's presentation go a little quicker. I think we were able to talk about some specifics and suggestions and different things that board members had, so try and keep this on the up and up and make it really positive. One, and I did not make this up, and I did not plan it this way, but on the way home Friday afternoon at 6:00 PM, I got a call from the state of Virginia, and based on the work collectively that our division has done and Dr. Abel's visit from VDOE, they are moving Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School up in the category with Saratoga, and we will not have any denied schools. So that's super exciting. And with that, we'll conclude. So that's really exciting, and I think that is the collective work of everybody in this room, not just the people at the table, certainly people all around the room and all the different departments that we interact with. And so that's, I think, a good celebration for our division. So as we go through today, I'm just going to share a little bit about where we began, go over some really basic data that's specific to our schools, talk about the supports that we offer, let you hear from three superstar principals about not only project momentum but just the success they've had in turning around schools. I think that's always the most exciting part, and then certainly any questions and follow-up from the board. So with that, you know, just as a kind of a reminder of where we start, you know, I think this is so important to keep our focus, and I, again, in our individual meetings with board members, I've tried to articulate, one of the many reasons I believe project momentum has been successful is that we do try to keep our focus on a small set of core values and a core mission, and for that, as it currently states, it really is to get every school accredited. That is our primary mission with these schools and with our office. I think there's some ancillary things that happen that are really good, but again, the primary part is making sure all our schools are accredited and we're well on our way to do that. For our new folks and some of our board members that may not remember, just kind of an overview of how we separate our schools. We have our universal schools, which are schools that really, we're hoping that are innovating, doing a lot of creative work. They're not really getting a lot of support from us. This year, we added a new designation. I'll explain that in a minute, based on some discussions over the summer. It's called Universal Plus, and those are schools that are getting it done, they're doing a really good job, they're not getting a lot of support from our office, but they are getting some needs-based staffing. Then we have our targeted schools that gets support from both us and the region office, instructional services, all the different extra supports that are out there, but primarily the region offices in our office are the ones that are working with our targeted schools. And then our intensive schools are the ones that we focus on the most. Those are the ones that are most in need of our help. They are facing the stiffest penalties from VDOE in terms of accreditation with warning status, or maybe they're a state-focused school, and so those are the ones that we spend the most time with. The needs-based staffing, all three of those groups get support for project momentum. It's those top two, and I, we just thought it was important to make that delineation for you a little bit different this year, so that's why we added that. That was based on some discussions with, at the time, Dan Paris and, of course, Dr. Lockard, and so we just felt that was a good idea to help give you that delineation of services. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Brendan, the math genius in our shop, who's going to talk a little bit about the formula, how we designate schools, and what schools are identified.
I'm Brendan Minier, I'm the executive principal for school improvement for Region Two, so I work with project momentum and with the Office of School Support. So the way we identify our schools for both tiers, we look at their accreditation status. If they're anything but fully accredited, we note that. We also look at whether they're part of the lowest 5% or 10% of Title I schools in the state, so the state ranks Title I schools, the priority schools are the lowest 5% score-wise in the state, and the focus schools are the next 10% up from that. So we look at those designations. We also look to see the gap points. So Virginia has set expectations for different subgroups for performance, and anything where a school falls short in those particular areas, there are points, they calculate the difference, and so we add up all those points and use that to help identify schools. We also looked at any missed annual measurable objectives as part of the federal law, and then we also look if the school's going backwards. Maybe they're still holding on to some of those other status, but they've been going backwards for a few years. We also note that. So automatic qualifiers to be an intensive, the top tier, the most supported tier, if they're in that lowest 5% or 10% of the Title I schools in the state, they're automatically in intensive status for us, and if they're in their second or more year of not being fully accredited, we automatically put them in intensive status and provide them with significant support. So here's an example of the formulas. If a school was warned in a subject, they didn't hit their numbers in the subject, they would be, we use a formula of 10 points per subject, so if they were warned in English, that would be 10 points, if it was English and math together, that would be 10 plus 10, 20 points. We also like to see that the state has this way to calculate accreditation. If the school has done well for the past three years, they take the average of those three years. So maybe this year, they didn't get the numbers, the target they were supposed to, but when we averaged their three years, they did. We say, well, that's not exactly like making your numbers outright. That's not exactly like hitting the goal, so we calculate that as a plus five in our formula. If they've missed any AMOs, we say that's one point per AMO missed, and their gap points we take at face value, so the number of gap points they have between expected performance and actual performance in language arts and math. And then we add all those up together to come up with the formula, and then we rank our schools, and we identify intensive or targeted. So this is just the number of schools in terms of accreditation. 1415 was the first year of project momentum. We had 18 schools that were not fully accredited, and we cut that down to 14, then to nine last year, and now we're down to seven schools. So we're hoping to eliminate that to zero. That's our goal of schools fully accredited, so we're on the right path, and we're excited about that. These are the particular schools right now that are not fully accredited, so you can see, year five, that's what Mark just talked about, Mount Vernon Woods, they were, we were questioning whether they'd be denied accreditation or reconstituted, and we were able to get them reconstituted. That's pretty exciting news. So they were warned in language arts, math, and science. Right behind them is Saratoga warned in science. We had two schools that would have been with Saratoga. You'll hear from one of them later, actually from two of them later, that they were able to get their schools fully accredited and not proceed into year four. We had a school that would have been year three, you'll hear from that principal as well. We were able to stop that. We have one school in year two, Glasgow Middle Schools, warned in language arts, and then we have four schools that are warned in year one. It's their first year of warning. Annandale Terrace and Whitman are both intensive schools, and Fort Belvoir Elementary and Mount Eagle are warned, and they're both targeted schools. It's their first year of being warned. Now back to Mark.
So one thing back on these schools, just to be fully transparent, you know, Annandale, Whitman, and Mount Eagle all had issues in the past. We got them fully accredited, and they did backslide a little bit. So our goal is really, how do we ensure that doesn't happen? The recidivism rate in, I finally got that word right, it took me a long time, in the state of Virginia is 90% for schools that are accredited with warning, come out and go back in. For us, it's below 30%. So, again, we're doing a really good job of not having that high of a rate of schools coming back in, and that's one of the reasons why the state has allowed us to do some of our own work, because they know that we're on the right track. Again, we don't have it solved, but we're moving in the right direction. But we do have to figure out how to prevent that from happening. I think I could tell a story along with the regional assistant superintendents about each one of those schools, but again, this is Fairfax County. We've got a lot of money and a lot of smart people. We shouldn't have any schools on this list, and that's our goal in the near-term future is to make sure that there's none, so then we can start working on some other more important problems. One of the things I want to talk about is the academic process. So year one, again, this is just an overview for folks that are new to the process. Schools that are in year one in accreditation with warning, the state comes in, does a full-scale audit. Because of our success, we are the only school system in the state of Virginia that gets to do our own audit. Myself and my team get to do it this year, which is, will be a new experience for us. How we're going to do that is kind of based on three things. We're going to evaluate lesson plans for selected grades and content areas where they didn't make the progress that they needed to make. We're going to do classroom observations in the areas of warning, and then we're going to provide feedback and work with the schools for next steps, and we're going to do that over the course of several visits, instead of kind of the state's version of come in, do an audit, and then leave. And so they are actually very interested in our process, and that's why they gave us the green light to do a proof of concept this year and let us do our own audit process, because we feel it's going to be much more thorough, and the reason we wanted to use this method was really to help try to prevent that backsliding in the future, so if we can really get in a little bit deeper and help identify the problem and create a more long-term fix, hopefully then we won't have issues in the future. So we're excited about the opportunity to lead the state in being able to create a new process and try it out, and we know that we're going to do great things with that. The next part is our year two through five schools, and that really hasn't changed. The only change for that, again, is a good thing. You guys have heard this before, when we have a school that's in year four, a reconstituted school, the superintendent has to go down, appear before the Board of Education three times a year, and we do, they do a triennial review this year. Dr. Bravrant doesn't have to go down. They're coming up to visit us. They've already come up once, they're going to come up again in February for their second visit, and depending on how that goes, they may not even do a third visit. So, again, that is kudos to our team and to the processes that we've put in place. Again, that's, we're the only division that is being allowed to do that. I think that, again, speaks volumes for our work. Just a quick overview where we began. We had 10 schools as we started the 1617 year that were intensive schools, nine elementary and a middle school. You can kind of see what year they were in terms of accreditation. Again, I went over most of this with you, with you all individually, and then you can see our targeted schools. We had 30 of them. So overall, we had 40 schools that were in project momentum getting services. This, to me, is the most exciting part. We had one of our two eligible focus schools able to exit. We would have had the other two that were not eligible exit. One went from 34 points on the state calculation to zero in one year. They were not allowed to exit because they have to stay in focus status for two years. There's no question that they will come out at the end of this year because of the great work they're doing, and the other school reduced theirs by 15 points. So had they been eligible, they certainly would have come out. Herndon Elementary School, Woodley Hills, they increased their pass rates in all four subject areas. Again, in schools like that, where the work is just so complicated and so tough, to increase in all four areas in one year is quite remarkable, and I think you'll hear from Teresa a little bit later about those exciting results. And then, as you can see, we had four schools that increased in three out of the four areas, but most importantly, both in English and math, and then another content area. So I think when you look at the overall results, it does show, again, we're on the right track. You can't say we have it figured out if we have seven schools that are accredited with warning, but you can see by the, you know, the stair-step approach that we are making progress. I think for me, if I had to pick one of those that I think is the biggest, it's two of the three year-three schools. When you're a year-three school, it's knocking on the door. The state is really going to start imposing some things that are, that make life not too comfortable, and to get two schools completely out in year three and not out by progressing, you know, they have a matrix, and if you get so many points and you progress enough, you know, they let you out or you're approaching benchmark. These schools came completely out and met every accreditation area fully, so that was, I think, great. Just kind of a graphic presentation so you can see. You guys have seen this before. We show it every year. That's kind of where we started. We know where Saratoga and Mount Vernon are. Now they'll be reconstituted schools, so we feel like that's pretty good results from where we started. If we look at our targeted schools, three of the four schools became fully accredited. Again, that's a pretty good success rate, and so it's a big list, so I'm sorry it looks so small. But again, that's, that's pretty good. The one that I have probably the most heartburn with is probably Fort Belvoir. Typically, in the past, if you were a new school, you had three years to establish your accreditation, and in the past two years, they actually went away from that, so now you get your accreditation right out of the gate. So that's just a state policy that I guess we got caught up in, but we will absolutely make sure that school's fully accredited this year. So, again, just kind of highlighting, these are the schools, this is the outcomes for English. Again, not perfect, you know, we want to be transparent. There's some schools that went down, but if you look overall, you know, it's those small incremental increases, and we're already above the line in most of those schools, but it's how do we continue making progress in some of our most challenging schools? And I think you see that. Same thing for math. Obviously, big challenges at Annandale Terrace, and certainly the largest at Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School, and we'll talk about the support that those schools are getting in just a minute. And science. In having conversations with many of you, we know that science continues to be a challenge, but you can also see, when you focus on it and you do a really good job, you can get it. I want to highlight Graham Road. The progress they made was the largest in the state of Virginia. I mean, they just absolutely knocked it out of the park and did a truly phenomenal job. So it can be done, and again, other schools did a good job, but then there's other schools that had a challenge. So we just have to figure out how to make sure we're consistently teaching it. You know, I look at the work that instructional service has done around creating planning and PACY guides and mapping that out. They're phenomenal, and it's just, how do we do a better job, the folks up here, of ensuring that it's being taught on a regular basis and that we're using the great resources that our ISD counterparts are creating so that we're working more in collaboration? And I think we have some ideas of how to do that that I've shared with some of you all in our one-on-one meetings, and we'll continue to figure that out and offer more training around that topic. That's something that we're discussing a lot at the leadership team level, so it's not something that we're just pushing off of the side. We know it's critical, because once we get that problem solved, we'll be in a lot better shape going forward. So this is probably the most important slide about what we do and what we provide. So before we shift over into the principals' piece, I just want to talk a little bit about what are the specific supports that we do. So obviously, we go in, we provide instructional support, we provide those extended contracts over the summer for our teacher leaders. We ask that they develop their school improvement and innovation plan over the summer and have it finished before we start the school year, so we're ready to start the ground running, and we're not building that plan like we had in the past in September and October. That's one of the things that principals report has been the most helpful. We make sure that we approve all their Title I funds. They come through, for intensive schools, they come through our office, and we work in collaboration with the Title I office to make sure that the funding is being spent on the things that we know make a difference. With that, we ensure that they have collaborative team time built in for both language arts and math every week, and we're also trying to build, make sure they're building in that science time, knowing that that is a need. Obviously, there's only so many hours in the day, and it's, everything's a competition for time, so we have some principals that have done a really good job of that. One of the things we do is we meet with the school every month. Our entire team goes. It's a very detailed meeting. We actually break out into pairs and trios and go do classroom observations throughout the entire school, or if there's a specific grade level or content area that a principal would like us to see. So we are really trying to focus on getting as many eyes on a problem as we can, then coming back, talking about that, what we saw, and what are some next steps. So if you think about, you know, throughout the course of the year, that's a lot of support to go in and do classroom observations, provide feedback, and assistance with our most challenging schools, and then we get really good differentiated support, and we've talked about this, I know, several times from our human resources department. They do a great job of helping to make sure schools are staffed. You know, I'll give you a quick example. Mount Vernon Woods, and I taught there 26 years ago. It was the first school I started to teach in. I don't know if it's ever been fully staffed at the start of the school year, but I certainly know that in the last 10 years it has not, because we went back and researched it. And this was the first year that all instructional positions, they were 100% fully staffed, and that came through a lot of effort with our human resources department, working specifically with the principal to do, you know, innovative things, to get out early, and really, that was the case with almost all our intensive schools. The support they got and the customized support from really all the offices has been just really phenomenal, and I think if I had to, people ask when we go out and present, you know, what do different departments think? What does, you know, the board think? And I said, it's really one of those initiatives where it's not about our office, it's about our division, and we have lots of people, again, in this room that support all the schools in a variety of different ways. We just happen to be kind of the tip of the spear, right? So maybe coordinating some of those things, making those phone calls, and our folks certainly are doing an awful lot of work in those buildings and working really hard, but there are definitely different offices that really support us and help us to make the success. You can't, if you're, if you're missing five or six teachers at the start of the school year, you're not going to be able to turn a really tough school around, and so they, again, they've done a great job with that. You can see our targeted support is just a little bit of a step down. So, again, we do the Title I, we fund for the school improvement plan, they get an instructional coach, just like they do in intensive. Intensive, they can get up to two. Instead of monthly meetings, we do quarterly meetings, again, just to try to step it down, and then, obviously, ongoing professional development from both our office and the other offices within the division. So with that, always the highlight is, I think, hearing from people that have done the work, and the work that they've done has been nothing short of incredible. So we have Maria Eck, who's the principal of Poe Middle School, who, they were in year two of accreditation with warning, a very challenging environment and demographic. I think the highest poverty rate in Fairfax County for a middle school. We have Tim Slater, who's at Cameron. He hasn't done this once, he's done this twice. If anybody wants to look at a perfect stair-step progress over time, look at Bucknell Elementary School, where he led and turned that school around over five years, and then to bring him in and have him in one year, get those results at Cameron, I think speaks volumes to him. And then probably one of the more difficult situations, you know, wasn't an experienced principal. Teresa Fennessey comes into Herndon in the, really, November timeframe, in a very challenging environment. We, I don't know if we held, we held out hope, but we were like, really like, oh my gosh, what's going to happen? And to see what she did in such a short time, and the results that they got, like, they didn't just barely make it. I mean, again, that's one of the schools that went up in all four areas across the board, is nothing short of spectacular, and so they're going to share a little bit about their story and their school, as we've done in the past, and certainly, I want, you know, board members to feel this is a great time to maybe ask them some questions as they talk a little bit about their journey with their schools. Which one of you is going first?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to describe some of the supports that project momentum has brought to the table. Mark mentioned that I have a two-school perspective, and as I was listening to the highlights page, some of the key words that they used were ones that I was hoping to use. The word I used was flexibility, in that the first school that I worked at at Bucknell, the needs were different, yet it was still the same concept that came to the table, same individuals, some different folks, but the mission was still the same, and they kind of shaped themselves, they recognized the needs, they worked with the principal and the administrators, and then they kind of fit into the holes and the gaps where they were to help kind of lift us up. When I moved to Cameron, I discovered that it's a different school with different needs, but project momentum came in again, and then they flexed, and they shifted, and they communicated with me, described things that they knew about the school too, and then helped fill in some different holes. So one piece of the project momentum model that I'm aware of is how flexible they are to respond to the specific needs of the school, and every one of the schools on the list there is unique. We have similar qualities and demographics and at-risk situations for students, but they're different, and so project momentum's ability to listen and then fill in is something that I've seen firsthand. For Bucknell, one of the key needs was teacher leadership, helping the teachers then learn to be good CT partners, and then help the teachers there learn how to lead CTs. And then Bucknell has the distinction of being the smallest school in the county, so that has its own set of challenges all together, and those all contributed to where Bucknell was. When it came to Cameron, though, there was a significant difference. There'd been some staffing shifts over a couple of years. We experienced some there too, so you had a whole different dynamic, new teachers, experienced teachers, but new teachers to Fairfax, and what they don't know about how we teach here in Fairfax, just simply the pacing, simply the curriculum, the content, the best practices that we say, we, this is what we want to do here at Cameron, and so they, that's a different hole, and they came in to fill in and coach, collaborate, teach, kind of sense the needs, and try to meet those needs. The other aspect that Cameron needed, and I think we probably noticed that across the board, was this idea of front-loading professional development. We really stretch our teachers, and we end up using a lot of days with substitutes that come in to take over time, and that really can cause additional stress, because it's a zero-sum game. You're either in the classroom with kids, or you're out here learning, but somewhere you lose. So by front-loading in the summertime and having a ton of PD upfront, really gave the teachers a boost to get started, perhaps way beyond where the rest of their colleagues might have been otherwise. And one other piece that's been really helpful is data support, and for Cameron, for me, it was a kind of a triage. Right away, we had some issues that we needed to contend with, and they're not issues that you would normally manage in the same way long-term. It was sort of like, we need to know where our groups are, where our intervention groups are, and we need to do it right now, and we need to move people right now, and you need a lot of bodies and a lot of voices to kind of figure that out. Well, project momentum, that was the group that came in and basically created our own sort of CT collaborative team to figure this problem out now, and that's the main reason why Cameron lifted itself out of the accreditation with warning status. And then they stretched it into, okay, so now how do we repeat that into the long term? So now their work shifted so that we're building capacity for teachers, kind of handing it off. How do we help teachers learn to be leaders within their own teams and in the school so that eventually, when it does happen, which is going to be at the end of this year, we're accredited again, our teachers will be taking over much of the work that the project momentum folks were doing? So that's the plan. I guess the second point I would sort of describe this with is, it might be a repeat of what I've described just now, but the word "side-by-side support" is a phrase that we've used a lot at Cameron. Somebody's always seeming to be right next to you, sort of asking questions, figuring it out, seeking where those holes are, those gaps are, but it's more than kind of the on-paper look. It's, if you saw it in action, it would be literally two bodies side by side, and that includes me, too. I've had more meetings with folks to discuss and think through problems, because you have to have a thought partner sometimes to work through things, especially as a new person, and the folks in project momentum, they're available, they're ready to go. I have a meeting tomorrow, 20 minutes before our monthly meeting to work with one of the key folks, and we're going to walk through a couple of issues that we've noticed that have come up and see how can we proceed. So if I had to kind of summarize it all, if you can imagine, it's way hard to simplify it this way, but just a growth curve that every school is on. Everybody's growing. We always have initiatives, new things are happening, and so we're putting work in, and we're on a growth curve, but sometimes our growth curve isn't by the timeframe and the requirements that the SOLs call for. It's not in the right spot. We need to be above. We need to be above whatever that spot is. And Project Momentum basically comes in and takes that line and gives it a boost and sort of shoves it up into a new regression line, if you want to call it that. And we're...it puts you in the right spots that you can attain what the state is asking for. That's how I see it. It's kind of a boost, a power pack, and it lifts you up and gets you going, and it gets it going early and right now. So, it's made a difference for Bucknell, made a difference for Cameron, and I'm confident it'll continue to make a difference for us going forward. Thank you.
So, good afternoon, and thank you for having me. Shout out to Bev. Bev used to be my AA at McNair. So, to say that I was Mark's probably most reluctant customer would be an understatement. So, when Mark approached me about having Project Momentum support, I was quite hesitant. Part of it is that I know where Poe is. I know the needs of the teachers, I knew where the kids were, I lived there every day. So, for me, I didn't have a one-size-fits-all approach that I could, that I wanted. I said, "You know, we're all in different places, and within a grade level, we were in different places." So, met with Mark, we talked a little bit about, you know, and I'll give you some really solid examples, sixth grade, math in general. So, my sixth grade math team is, they had wonderful results. But they wanted a little bit of help with creating a differentiation and working with kids in small groups. My seventh grade math team wanted a different approach. They wanted to work on many assessments. And then my eighth grade math team was trying to incorporate Math Workshop, whereas my algebra and geometry teacher was just trying to do Madeline Hunter, good old Madeline Hunter approaches to teaching. So, it required very differentiated, you call it customized. I thought of it as targeted, for someone to come in and sort of support those teams through those changes and through their needs. And that's what really the Project Momentum folks did for us. So they came in, and they made a commitment to my math department, that they would be at CTs, they would be in classrooms observing them, and they kept those commitments. They came every time there was a CT meeting, they came when they said they were coming for observations, they modeled lessons. Whatever they committed to the teachers, they followed through. Same thing with English. We needed a different approach in our seventh grade English grade. So, they came in and said, "We want to do small group instruction, but still keep it a little different." They looked at the Hattie model, the person from Project Momentum read up, you know, did their work, and we supported them in that way. So, it's been very targeted and very customized for us in whatever we need. And then, as the year went on, we noticed other things. So we're like, "Hey, we could use a little support with co-teaching." And so, we...they were flexible in that regard, that they were like, "Okay, so let's bring some people in." Sometimes, at least last year, there were people that they didn't have in their, within their department. So, they brought in people from IS. So, having that flexibility of like, "Oh, well, we don't have that expert here, but we know where there's an expert," and finding that expert and bringing it to us as well. I heard Mark mention the, those teacher contracts, those needs-based staffing. And for me, that needs-based staffing was essential, because it allowed me to do creative things with my master schedule. So, we double-blocked our students in sixth grade for English, because that's what we were warned in the state of Virginia. So, we were able to do that with our needs-based staffing, we can double-block kids. We also wanted to bring up the rigor for the rest of the kids. So we were able to put in an additional honors class, we were able to put in our STEM initiative. And so, being able to use some of that needs-based staffing for both ends of the spectrum. And then, with the extended contracts, we were like, "You know, Mark, we're not sure that we need all of those extended contracts. What we need is more planning days. Our teachers want to get together, they want to look at student data, they want to look at making assessments and planning." So, we were able to sort of negotiate that. And we were able to use the planning days instead of some extended contracts. So, again, I think I'm repeating everything that you said, which is that flexibility, it's very customized, and it's a resource, and it's a support. Actually, my math teacher said, we were talking about Kelly Lynn, who's our math resource person, and she was getting some resources for them, and she goes, "Yeah, she's our resource person. She's our support. She supports us in everything that we do." So, whether it's developing an anchor chart for the team or actually teaching the class, those people are there for our teams. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Teresa Fennessy, and I'm at Herndon Elementary. You know, to work at a Title I school, you have to be a Navy SEAL of teaching. You really do. And I tell the staff that. And why is that? Well, you've got to have teamwork, you have to have training, and you have to believe in the mission. And that's what we've done at Herndon. So if you think of our teachers as the tip of the sword, the Project Momentum support that we got was really the fuel and the resources and the training that helped us reach our goals. So we couldn't have done this alone. One of the fortunate things that we had at Herndon is that one of the assistant principals was a Project Momentum person, Laura Elliott. And she really was a key driver in what we were able to accomplish this year and this past year. What we've tried to do is develop a sense of synergy at the school, so we're all working together, because there were a lot of people working separately, but not as a group, you know, all hands on deck. And we wanted to really work on the intellectual capital of the teachers, because you come out of college and you may not really know how to teach reading. And so, we really wanted to boost that through collaborative team efforts. We also looked at interventions and made sure that we had the intervention so that kids could succeed. And finally, we also worked on looking at data and having accountability. And that wasn't accountability in the negative sense, it was accountability in the positive sense. What do we all need to do to make it so these kids can accomplish what they need to accomplish? So, we did individual data dialogues and the quarterly data dialogues. And the Project Momentum team were working with this even though they didn't, Sean, vote for us that we were gonna make it? No, I'm gonna remember that. No, just kidding. But they really helped us in providing all the charts and everything to make sure that our teachers could look at the data and understand it. So, that's really all I have to say, but I just want to thank them a lot for everything that they've done.
You're really not supposed to tell anyone we had a pool.
I know. Well, I did.
Thank you, guys. If there's, I don't know if this, do you want to wait till the end, or is this, if anybody has any questions for the principals?
If anyone has questions for the, I know Ms. Corbett-Sanders, you had just for the principals group here.
First, thank you. I really appreciate all that you have done for our kids and for our school system. It's greatly appreciated. I have had the pleasure of working with Mr. Slater over the past couple of years, and I am always appreciative of your insights, but it's nice to hear the insights of our other two principals. I loved the analogy of the Navy SEAL, especially in light of the Navy's birthday over the Most of our accreditation challenges that we have in the county are for our elementary schools. And one of the questions I have for you is that we, when we got rid of half-day Mondays, and that was the right decision in many ways, however, it did have an impact on collaboration and planning time for our elementary schools. Do you think that we, as we develop our calendars going forward, that it would be helpful to build in more collaboration in planning time, including professional development time, for our elementary school staffs? I have more questions. Yes, okay. I do, too, just from what I've been watching. I think when we look at the number of schools that face these challenges, it's important to ensure that our teachers have the time. Additionally, you know, we always talk about knowing students by name and need. I think what's so wonderful about the way Project Momentum has approached the schools is that the Project Momentum team knows our schools by community and need. And when I say community, I mean broader than just the community in which students come from, but the community of teachers and administrative staff. And so, I think that that approach is one that if we can model everywhere, it's greatly appreciated. I would like to talk a little bit about two things, two additional things. One is science in elementary school. Science tends to be our challenge, and it's a challenge that catches up with us, not in elementary school, a little bit, but more in middle and high school. And so, I would like to hear from the principals how you think we can better address the challenges of science across the county? And whether or not, you know, when I grew up, we used to have science fairs in every elementary school. And that was an incredible way of teaching the scientific method at a very early age. So do we need to revisit that?
I think the science issue is very complicated. Mainly, I think you'll see a lot of schools that don't make accreditation because of science. And part of the reason for that is when they got rid of, in my opinion, the third-grade science SOL. What happened was, you would have two grade levels that were counting for accreditation instead of one. So the problem is, if you have a group of students that are struggling academically, sometimes you have cohorts of kids that go through a school, and if they get to that fifth-grade area, sometimes they can struggle in that. Having said that, I think one of the issues, and I think these guys would probably agree, is that in some schools, they may not be teaching science as much as they should be at every grade level. And that's something that we're really working on, because the fifth-grade science SOL builds from the fourth grade. And so, we really have to make sure that even though they have that fourth-grade social studies, that they still are teaching the science content so the kids don't have to learn two-grade levels of science in one year. So, I love the idea of science. We're doing some exciting things at Herndon this year with science and STEM, and not a science fair per se, but I think any activity would be great.
I think whenever you have a sample size and it gets smaller, then it's subject to variability. And that's exactly what happened when we went to one grade level. I don't want to speak for or against the decision to test or not test third-grade science, but, you know, that's for other people to decide that. But I do note that I think there's been a lot of change. When you, it's subject to one small group that flows through, and back at Bucknell, even that was subject, it was like 30 kids. 30 kids were gonna decide the fate of the whole school. The first move that most schools I've noticed have done when science became an issue was to check, first of all, are you teaching it? Especially in fourth grade. It was an on-off kind of thing, because fourth grade focuses on social studies, they do. So now they're realizing, you know, we really have to touch science all the way through the grades, especially fourth grade. But it was when they began to say, "It's really a priority to make sure we give it all the time it's due," do we know what we're teaching? And so, the front-loading of the professional development for science this summer, that was a huge, huge piece for us, especially with new teachers coming into Fairfax, but it's important. So, if you were to think of maybe the professional development days that could be added into the calendar, if that were something to happen, I would imagine a lot of it would be put towards making sure we know how science should be taught. Do we, the question, "Do you know the content? Do you know what you're teaching?" That's all four subject areas. And if you don't know the content, you're having to learn it just a few minutes before you're teaching it to the students, then that can be problematic. And you get lower-level quality with instruction. And if you know it really well, and you're collaborating with your team and coming up with really strong instructional practices, then you have opportunities to be engaged with the content through, you know, things like a science fair or STEM opportunities, whatever it is that might be available. And, you know, resources provided towards that, you know, would get used in that way, for sure. I mean, we would. We had a STEM opportunity last year, and just the way staffing boiled out, we weren't able to support that again. So, if that were a thing that was always there for us, then you could have those engaging opportunities to apply the science in hands-on kind of ways and teach students that it's really important, and the teachers with the professional development up front.
You raise an important issue, though, or a comment that is a bit disconcerting, which is that because we got rid of an SOL on science, then the priority for science went away. And so, as somebody who believes that we have to prioritize science in all of our schools, I would like to better understand how we can see an increased emphasis on science throughout the continuum, that just because we got rid of a third-grade SOL doesn't mean that we shouldn't have some manner in which we evaluate whether or not our third-grade children are picking up the scientific concepts.
We may be along that way. I mean, that comment from me was back in my Bucknell days, it was the initial thing. A lot of folks were making that discovery and realizing, "We have to start teaching early, we have to have exposure to science early, and it has to flow through fourth grade, because the fifth-grade content, the test touches both grade levels."
And that wasn't a criticism, it was more of, "We need to have consistent delivery across the whole district." And science is one of those areas where we don't necessarily have that consistent delivery. But you raise another issue, which is where my last question is coming from, and that is on having a single data point. And the challenge with Fort Belvoir Elementary, our primary in its accreditation, is that it has one data point, which is the third grade. And that was because we split the school into two buildings and called it two schools. I guess my question would be, and this may be for you, Dr. Braybrand, is whether or not, if we had taken those third-grade scores and combined them with the scores of the upper school, which, by the way, is on the same campus. They share the same playground, they share, you know, many of the same things, then maybe we need to relook at how we report that school to the state as being one school instead of two.
I think, it sounds like Mark has a quick answer on that. Let me say two things about science. One is, overall, for elementary instruction to continue to get stronger, we need to have consistency of the master schedule expectations across all elementary schools. That's what needs to happen. It's been a school-based situation, and we want to keep autonomy at schools, but we need to be sure that there is still fidelity to teaching instruction across it. It's not just Fairfax, I'll tell you, the prior school division, I went to schools, "Oh, my God, I'm supposed to be teaching science?" Yes. And it's got to filter down, and then what Tim's already said, you got to give those teachers professional development. They are not science experts, the standards in elementary science are sophisticated. And I know, Francisco, the other thing is, for science at elementary school, those kids, our EL kids, don't have the same, was it seven semester rule? The seven semester, 11 semester. They have to take that science test with very, very limited English experience. It's vocabulary-rich. We've asked Dr. Staples, I've sent a letter about a month ago, asking for the same flexibility in science as we have for English Language Arts, and we're waiting to hear from the state. That's been hurting some of our schools through no fault of their own, that that kid is just not ready yet for that vocabulary-rich assessment, is still learning the concepts, still learning the English language. So, I'm hopeful that a little more fidelity to the master scheduling and making sure our regional assistant superintendents are checking in, and doing a little bit more work for the right flexibility for our EL kids that are really at very base levels of proficiency to have to take that assessment. Give the same flexibility for them as they have for the English Language Arts test.
On the Fort Belvoir piece, and I'll let Betris Huffin answer that a little bit later, because she was our expert that worked with the state on that. It did have to do with the naming conventions and those pieces, because it is two separate campuses. And we looked at, you know, she researched, looking at being able to count those together, and we were not able to do that. So that was absolutely looked into. She is far more skilled and knowledgeable about that issue than me, so I'm not gonna sit up here and try to pretend to give you an answer when I don't know the nuances of the state rules and regulations. But I'll make sure that either she answers it when she comes up and does her presentation, or we'll provide the group with a more detailed answer, because it's a very good one. I mean, it's a great question. I mean, it's a great question that we all asked, because obviously we were scrambling, hey, what can we do to get this, a school that we believed if they were paired together would have made it, and we just were not able to.
I think it's actually a lessons learned that when we decided to make it two schools versus saying that it is one school with two buildings on the campus, that was what undermined it.
All right, my colleagues, we're going to go back and we're going to finish the presentation because the principals will be here throughout. And obviously, the questions are going to divulge beyond the specificity of each individual school. So Mr. Greenfeller, if you will please finish. And first, then, the first question at the end of the presentation will be Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Palczek.
Okay, I'll try and speed through this part then. Again, this is just an update. We're trying to really be accountable for the resources we have and what we're doing. I spoke with several of you about this. These are our visits, you know, 2,500 visits by our team within the school year. We're actually doing it by hour this year, so we'll be able to, we can tell you by month how many hours we are spending in a particular school. The reason this is powerful for us, it's not for everybody, I'm not advocating that, but for us it works because we want to make sure, is Mount Vernon getting the most touches at a quick glance? Is Poe getting the most touches? Is Herndon? We need to make sure that, you know, for last year, those schools that were the most in need of accreditation with warning support, we're getting it. That's really our purpose. And then what are we doing? Where are we providing that support? Is it mostly with planning and instruction? Are we doing a lot around data analysis and leading teams through the process? Are we modeling for teachers? Are we giving feedback? This gives us that snapshot. And we actually met this morning as a team to refine this list, because I had actually met with some folks. That was actually a suggestion by some people around this table. And so we're actually looking now at refining that list even further so we can get more accurate with what supports we're providing. And then making sure it's going in the right areas, the right areas of support based on accreditation needs. And who are we supporting? Needs to be the classroom teachers most, which it is, and then other folks in the building. So again, it's that quick check, are we on the right track? Are we providing the support where it's needed? And are we being accountable for that support? And I think that really shows that well. So I'm going to let Brennan talk real quick about where we are, the schools this year. Evangelion's going to finish up with specific supports and our focus for this year, and then we'll be ready for questions.
So the same formula applies that we, I just shared with you a few minutes ago. These are the nine intensive schools that we're serving this year. So four of them are fully accredited, three of them are warned. Actually, now Saratoga and Mount Vernon Woods, we know, are warned as well. So it's four fully accredited, five warned. And then we have our 16 targeted schools.
Reduction from 30 to 16, that's pretty significant.
Reduction from 30 to 16. And most of them are fully accredited, as you see. Now, that's just our notes about why we selected them, what we're keeping an eye on for them. Evangelion's going to talk a little bit more about our work.
So as our office works with our identified intensive and targeted schools, we focus on developing the collaborative teams in schools by using high-yield strategies. We help our schools define their response to intervention or RTI model for students who need additional help beyond the classroom instruction. And additionally, as an office, we're engaging in our own learning, we're continuously learning. Right now, we're engaged in a book study, learning by doing, so that we can be facilitators in the school of best practices as we work with school teams to develop highly collaborative and effective teams. Our folks work side-by-side with school staff, and during that work in collaborative teams, we reinforce the instructional cycle. And more than just assistance with unpacking and planning the lessons, we help our teams use data and reflection to improve student learning outcomes. You'll see from this slide that some of the key elements of our work with Project Momentum Schools, building student-teacher relationships, using formative assessments, building the collaborative expertise and developing an intervention model, are high-yield strategies from Hattie's research of what works best in education to overcome the effect size of poverty. We know that students may need remediation and intervention beyond the classroom. We help schools clearly identify their intervention model and what the teacher supports are versus the school-wide supports. By providing one-on-one support around best practices and the collaborative learning cycle in our intensive and targeted schools, we're developing the long-term capacity for schools to take on this work when Project Momentum exits. And then finally, it is our expectation that with structure and support, our seven intensive schools will be fully accredited for the 18, 19 school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz is away from the table. We'll start with Ms. Palczek.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I'm still gathering my thoughts. This is incredible work, and I know we've all had the opportunity to meet with you independently, Mark, and it's so helpful. I appreciate that before we come to the table. I guess for you and for our principals, I have a couple of more specific questions and then some broader overall questions. I guess the first one, and also in meeting with Dr. Zuluaga about professional development, my first, just small question is, hearing you speak about the front-loading of the professional development, I know Dr. Zuluaga also mentioned how important that is and to, you know, have that fidelity of implementation in our professional development as well. You did mention the summer PD work, but I'm wondering, do you have recommendations as we look at future calendars as to when we schedule the, before school starts and beginning of school year, professional development?
I feel like I'm grabbing the third rail. I'm going to get electrocuted. I, you know, it's hard because I grew up in Fairfax, right? So I remember, you know, early Monday release and the reason for getting it. And I had little kids that went through school and, you know, my gosh, I need them to be in school, and why are they coming home at 1:30 on month? I get all that. But when we went away from that, we did lose some professional development opportunities. And I think certainly in many conversations with Sloan and Francisco that they lead at our leadership team meetings, they have some really good thoughts of how we can get back to providing really good professional development for our teachers on a consistent basis throughout the school year. And we do need to build that time. And I think that's a critical component. I believe that's one of the reasons why Project Momentum is successful. I don't really, our folks don't really do anything different than what instructional service is developing. We just get to do the work, right? Because we have the time to do it, we're embedded in the school. It's the same work. We do it collaboratively. Many of the people that I'm fortunate enough to have in my office came from that department. They helped create a lot of the great stuff. So it's just that they're in the schools on a consistent basis, as you've kind, as you heard from the principals, partnering with people and being able to do that ongoing professional development. It's really hard, you know, we talk about science. We can't fix science if we don't give our great experts the opportunity to have the time to teach teachers about the science and then let the teachers practice what they learned and use it in a really, in a way that's going to make a difference for kids. We're creating stuff and we're wishing that they're going to get it. But I think that we have, at least with some of the calendars that I've seen, I think we're on to a way to potentially fix that in the future. And I do think front-loading it a bit is really important to build that front-loading piece. And then some days sprinkled throughout the year with some real targeted PD is a way to get us back on track.
And I guess as a side note, and it may not be popular for many, but do you see an impact on having those PD days be right before or right after a weekend?
Man, that's a really hard one. I don't, I'm going to let the boss answer that.
Mark, you're empowered and everyone is to answer the question as you see it. But we're, we're going to bring you a calendar. We're having intensive discussions at LT around these very issues right now. I know Dr. Ramey's just been meeting with the full committee. You're going to see, what I love is, is the actual debate, the questions you're generating match the conversations we're having. And I think you're going to see the spirit of these questions reflected in the calendar options that you'll have to review.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate, I just want to make sure that was in the calendar conversation, so happy that there, Dr. Ramey.
And the one thing I'd add is, is Dr. Braybrand's right. It's coming from all of our constituents on the calendar committee. And we have a variety of different representatives that we'll talk about when we bring that forward. But it is quite a balancing act as we try to balance all the interest around that. But PD is something that we've heard consistently, not only from our teachers, but from administrators, our parents, our associations, all understand the importance of making sure it's embedded throughout the calendar.
Thank you. I appreciate that. On the more, on the broader questions, you've brought up a few things that I know we spoke privately about. A would be, and I'd love to hear the principals as well, the work you're seeing that's being done through Project Momentum, that really is taking what we, people have developed already, but finding a way to really implement that here in a targeted manner and to, you know, use those best practices and to sit side-by-side and coach teachers. I guess, A, for that work that's been happening, do you see the benefit? And are we starting to look at more broadly how Project Momentum, I'm seeing some, can be used beyond Project Momentum, right? I'm guessing that's.
I love it. We're doing all this, yes. Steve could talk a little bit. You want to say, you want to say a little bit, Steve? Or just give him a, just a touch?
Well, sure. Thank you for the question. Mark and I just talked about the, Dr. Braybrand and I talked a little bit about how, you know, so how do we take some of these lessons learned? How do we take the successes and even some of the challenges or struggles we've had and look a little more systemically? You saw in the beginning slides what Mark shared with some of those, the universal piece that we've expanded a little bit. We recognize that there's, there's opportunity for lots of folks to grow, not just those who might be mightily struggling in one area or have a significant challenge in another area. And we need to start to figure out a way to, to spread that wealth a little bit more. It comes down a lot to, to time. It comes down to the amount of folks we have to do that work. And so we've begun those conversations and started to wrestle, wrestle with that a little bit.
Yeah, and I guess kind of related to that was, I love the idea of the audit that we will be forced to do internally. And that seems to be an opportunity as well to perhaps get on a cycle. I understand we can't be everywhere, every 200 sites every year, but perhaps this work in addition to what we learn from doing this more operational programmatic audit. Because I know I have some schools who are not on that list, who had some slippage this year, right? And aren't quite being targeted, but we know we want to nip that in the bud before it does get there. So I guess for that, I guess that and specifically the audit, what you might see as opportunities, but maybe some things that maybe wouldn't work, you know, streamlined across the system.
I think the one thing I would say is that the formula that we used, and Terry Dade helped lead the effort of creating that formula with Dr. Locker a few years back. And it really, it takes the politics out of it. It's, it's, if you have X number of points, you are pretty much a tier-one school in terms of needing help. And so we rank them. I think once we get out of the state accreditation business, which I believe is the goal for the end of this year, is how do we then get to what, the point that you brought up? Brendan has been instrumental in starting to look at some regression data and looking at trend data over three and five years. If you notice this year, when we met, the data was a five-year compilation of data, which really starts giving us a better picture of where schools are heading. So now we can be a little bit more proactive and start to do what you said, find, what are those schools that have the largest downturns but then are still fully accredited? They might not be a school that has any issues with being accredited, but yet, you know, what's going on in that building? And so that would be a part of any type of audit process that we would look at. In addition to that, we know, and I told EJBI when you met, you know, kind of forget the back page with the gap points and that because the state is redoing that. And then we'll find that out in November and we'll provide an update to you. But when they do, there is going to be a gap point component. We just are not 100% certain how they're going to calculate that. And I think that's what we then go after, is what are those schools with the largest gaps? Because that would probably surprise a lot of people. And so you look at that trend, you look at that gap, and then use, you know, the great people that we have in our office and other offices to partner together to see, how do we now, how do we attack that next problem?
I think that was my next one, the gap, so thank you.
Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Strauss.
So I have some actually very specific questions. Can we go to, they're not numbered, but on the presentation, slide 11 or page 11 or going way back, it's the calculation slide. That one. So let me ask you a question because I'm wondering if in the, like, I don't know how this rating system was established, but my interpretation, and this is a lay, you know, takeaway, does this mean that passing on a three-year average is five times more important than met all AMOs? I mean, so like, is there a relative point value? And why did you determine this in terms of being able to assess where in the pyramid a school would fall?
That's a great question, and my honest answer is, we made it up. I mean, we came up with those point values. I'm not going to, I mean, there's, you know, we tried to come up with some type of, we tried to assign point values to different things that we thought would give us a.
I understand that you made them up, but what I'm saying is, is that on a relative scale, for math to be eight gap points versus reading, does that mean as a percentage, it's, you know?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like a third more important? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Sure. So we say that the most important thing is not getting accredited in a subject. So that's 10 points. That's the, that means you're not accredited by the state of Virginia, so that's automatically got to be 10. That's our highest point value, the top, the top bar there in the sample. We say that making it on the three-year average is kind of, kind of like not making it out, right? You didn't do as well as you're supposed to. But it's, we say it's half as important. We got to, we got to give it some value, but it's, it's not nothing, but it's not the same as not making, making it. Because it says you're accredited because you did well for the past three years, and when we average them together, you hit the number that we need you to hit.
But take out the other two years and you haven't made it.
So we're worried about that. And then the AMOs, the annual, there's 36 AMOs for elementary schools and 37 for high schools. So you, if we, if we did any multiple of that, we'd start getting into these large, large numbers. So it gets really complicated. So we just count them at face value. It's federal accountability, which is different than state accountability too. So it, the federal government isn't, isn't the one putting us in sanctions the way that the state is. And then lastly, the gap points. I just, in this sample, the kids in reading, in one subgroup, performed six points lower than expected, so we show that as a plus six. In this sample, we said, and let's pretend in math, they did plus eight.
So the reason I'm asking is, and not that I'm necessarily asking you to change your assessment, but what I would say is to go back and apply this and determine, does this need any adjusting? Because, you know, yes, we've gone from, I forget what the number is, 14 down to seven, but we still have seven. And so is the, is there any need in the initial assessment or the evaluation of where schools either currently are, have been, you know, and the progress in between in order to apply a more, you know, nuanced metric? So that's, that's, and you don't necessarily have to answer.
We are going to adjust it. So your question is a great one because we're going to get the AMOs and are going to change in the gap points based on the state in November. So we're going to have to go back and retool this. And so we are going to do that, and we'll bring that to the board of what our suggestion is.
Now, what I want to caution is, on a going-forward basis, if anything changes, because this has been a criticism of the board in the past, is that, well, that was that Project Momentum, or that was that Project Excel, and now it's different, and it's not exactly the same. And so you can't ever assess over time. So I want to, there's a cautionary asterix that goes with that, that you be able to cohesively connect whatever you change. The second question I have is, if you could go to slide 26. It's the beginning of intensive, keep going, keep going. Nope, that, okay. So on the second bullet for extended contracts, and there was a little bit of a discussion around extended versus professional development. My question is, because that's, that's a categorical term, and extended contracts mean something in our vernacular in terms of budgeting and number of days and we under, do you mean the extended contracts we mean? And what is it, 2, 12 or, I forget, what's the number?
So it's, for this, it's a. So it's, for this, it's a 203-day contract. So it's 10 extra days. So we've been doing this for the past, since Project Momentum.
But does this, but does that phrase always mean the same amount of time? Is it always a 203?
Yes.
Or is it ever, like, a few extra days?
No. It's just for, it's, so it's seven for elementary school.
Seven 203-day contracts.
Seven 203-day contracts. Then for middle school, we do eight. In the past, when we had high schools, we did 12, but we don't have it, we haven't had high schools for two years that have gotten them.
Okay. So what, so the next thing that I would suggest is the potential, and I, I was thinking, I wrote it before you said it, the potential that that isn't necessarily the same answer for all situations. Like, is there the potential of granting a few extra professional days, or a half of an extended contract, or maybe, maybe 203 isn't enough? Maybe in certain circumstances, Mount Vernon Woods comes to mind. Is there the potential, so what I don't want is the cookie cutter answer to be cookie cutter, because Mount Vernon Woods might not need what another school needs. And so that may need...
And you did it different.
To be something different.
Right. Okay.
And so...
We'll be more explicit in that.
I, I ask for specificity in reporting to us when you say extended, extended what? And whether or not it's appropriate, and whether that we should think of funding at a different rate. And then I guess my question would be, in looking at the schools that remain, because this came up at a forum topic, and there was, while there was consensus, not all of us agreed, the issue of mobility, quote unquote, in these schools, and whether or not this model applies a solution that's irrespective of necessarily poverty, or racial makeup in the school, a cultural makeup in the school, mobility makeup in the school. If this is quote unquote "the" answer, and it doesn't matter whether it's 10% mobility, 20% mobility, or 30% mobility, if this is the answer, then do we need to be looking at and spending time separately as a board, the mobility question, or does the mobility question change, you know, this approach?
Just Mark speaking? I don't want to speak for anybody else.
I thought it was Greenfield or out earlier.
Greenfield or out. I don't know if you need to have the separate mobility question, because this is the, this, the schools that are on here are schools with the highest mobility. So those are the ones where, those are the ones that we're working with. And if you have less mobility, and you're, and you're, we're applying these, these solutions in this systematic approach to helping your school improve, we're going to even get better results. So i- if that helps the board in that discussion, I, I don't know if you necessarily need to have a separate one. We certainly factor that in. We know these are high mobility schools. We, we, we put a lot of effort into, that's a lot of, a lot of the training that goes in. What do you do when kids bounce in and out? How do you bring kids up to, to level very quickly that are just coming in?
I sort of anticipated that. I mean, so colleagues, when I was making my comments and during the forum about mobility, this is actually what I was anticipating, was that in fact, we potentially actually already have the answer. It's a question of looking at how we're applying, what the rubric is, really, like, what is the underlying issue? And if we're able to resolve, and I don't know if you have the data, and this may be a next step, the makeup of each of the schools from the 14 down to the seven, the, the underlying attributes of those schools, and are the seven that remain the highest mobility, or have we closed the gap on the, like, have some with the high mobility fallen off? That would be interesting for us to understand that component. And then on slide 28, two more later. So my question, it's sort of this one and the successive slide. Is there a, a planned, so I'm thinking in IEP language, a planned fade to support? You know, so when, when I see, you know, 489 consults, or 356 in data analysis, are, that's, that's how often you're called in, but are, is the plan structured so that there is an intentional fade to support?
Yes. So...
And for those who don't know, I, I'm not going to...
This is the most, and this is probably one of the most important questions that we try to solve, is how do you wean yourself out of that? So we, we, our goal is that if you're an intensive school, we provide you support for two years, even if you become fully accredited. That's why you see on the list, some of those schools that are fully accredited are in their second year of intensive. Even if they become fully accredited again, they don't drop back and go to a universal school. Then they go to targeted. So we begin to wean that support and do kind of a gradual release. They have to stay in that for two years, and then we wean them out. And I'll, I'll give you a specific example that's 100% my fault, and that's Whittenham Middle School. So we hired Roger. He did a phenomenal job. God rest his soul. He was a good friend of mine. I talked him into going there, and he did great. And he sweet-talked me into making him a targeted school. And I let him, and I shouldn't have. Because had we had been there and been proactive in that school, we might have been able to do some things to keep it fully accredited. And going through the tragedy of, of losing a principal in the middle of the year, and a student, is very, very difficult for a school that's in a tough situation already to continue with. That taught me a lesson that we need to stick with what we agree to. And, you know, I remember Brendan in my ear saying, nope, you got to stick with it, you got to stick with it. And I just, I didn't. It's my, I mean, it's my fault.
So, so, so it's one thing to say that it's a fade, like, over a couple of years, but, but are the specific types of support, because there's, I mean, you know, not to be cross, but there's dollars associated with all of this.
Absolutely.
So is there, is there an intentional fade of support in, in these certain areas over that time, such that, you know, I mean, it's sort of like the FEMA response. The second that you land on the ground, you're trying to get out of being there.
Right.
You know, you're, you're trying to ramp up, you know, the, the native support structure and inherent, you know, systems there, such that, you know, you're on a path to leaving as soon as you arrive.
Absolutely. I, I think our fundamental purpose is to build the capacity of teams and teachers so that we can, so they don't need us. We're trying, we really use the philosophy, we're trying to work ourselves out of a job. I mean, we want to remove ourselves from those schools. So we really are trying to build their capacity. I think you bring up a really good reflective question for us to go back and look at, is what is our systematic approach for looking at that? I think we're now collecting the data to do it. So once we have that, and now that we're even doing it by hour and looking at it even more closely, is how do we, how do we back that off in a more systematic approach and, and measure that? And that's actually something that the state asked us to do when they were up, visiting us. Their question was, how do you know the specifics of what you're doing is working in a particular area? And so we actually just in this past week, started reporting that out to Dr. Lockard. So we're trying to do that.
That's a tangential dovetail to my last question, which is, has there been an assessment of why we found ourselves in this position in the first place? What is it that, I mean, is, is there not inherent knowledge, both as a matriculating new teacher, and then whatever we do as building educators and building administrators? Why is it that we're having to come in after the fact to provide tools? Why weren't they there? Like, I, I'm wondering, is this, are we reinventing the wheel? I mean, these are not new concepts that children come to school with deficits, and that certain children come to school with certain kinds of deficits. So why is it that we have school communities that don't inherently have the teacher knowledge, the counseling knowledge, the special services knowledge, the administrative principal knowledge to solve these problems? Like, we, I don't, I don't think that there's any school that we have that has a group of incompetent teachers, incompetent, that doesn't happen in Fairfax County. So why do we have vacuums of knowledge where we're having to come in and put intensive amounts of information into the hands to solve problems that we sort of already know are there? Do you know why that is?
Let me, I think one of the things we've been challenged with in this system, at this size system, is the effect of monitoring and follow-up of best instructional, of best practices, name blank best practices, and making sure it's happening. I was a cluster assistant superintendent, and it was smaller then. It was still almost 30 schools. To really make sure it was happening in math, science, social studies. Yes, instructional services would do a great workshop, great reviews, doing the follow-up to see whether there was fidelity of implementation of the best practice. You've got, we do have an issue in teacher prep for our new teachers coming in across Virginia, to have the skillset to really, I think, have success in higher poverty schools and, and schools with higher mobility. We still, my argument is, our teacher prep programs still teach for middle-class kids, from middle-class backgrounds, with all due respect. We have some great schools that put out teachers, but they're not focused on the specific pedagogy, the specific knowledge of assessment instruction that's going to help those kids do better. So honestly, what we've got now is, in the past, we had the cluster, we now have the region, this is region plus. Almost to go way back to the area days, the area superintendents, the negative was four different systems. But the area superintendent had a team of instructional folks that could specifically go into schools. That's really what we've recreated here. And my chuckle earlier is really how to create, this is a little bit of going back, going back in our history, and taking this idea and then focusing it at scale with all of our central office folks getting school specific.
I'm really glad you said that, Dr. Bray Brown, because this is, when we talk about things like expanding the one-to-one technology device across the board, or anything that we're talking about scaling, that's, when I discuss concerns about the maintain, sustain, the sustainability of something over time, and if you scale it for the division, that you have now, I mean, between the two of you, very much identified for us as a board in terms of oversight, which is really a lot of the role, is what do we emphasize, and how do we know there aren't pockets of excellence while, you know, and then we wind up in a situation where, you know, by lack of whatever, we're having a backfill. And it would be, you know, it's far better to be proactive and work at never being in a position where you're having to go back and, and dig, you know, schools or individual classrooms, or minorities, or students with disabilities, or students with dyslexia, whatever, out of a hole. So, you know, to be intentional with the work of the board in collaboration with you, in, in the oversight and the fidelity of these practices is the key to me going forward.
One elephant in the room that I just want to name, and I don't take credit for Project Momentum, I'm glad it's here, and frankly, we're going to figure out how we expand the concept of this across more things. And I was here in leadership team when we first started having these discussions. The, the point system that you already asked about is not about region, it's not about who your friend is, it's not about what school board member really wants you to put people in here, it's about what do the results say, and then focus support for those schools. That is powerful. And the point system took away, because it was, look, I mean, I'll be honest, I, I wanted help for my school, so-and-so wanted help for theirs. What was the fair way to figure it out? They came up with a multi-tier point system that looked at multiple pieces to help figure out the criteria. And honest, even what Mark said, and I, again, we're going to be transparent in front of this board. What was his one mistake? He kind of went back and reverted to the, you're my friend, I'm not going to really have you fit into the criteria. Uh-uh. Your school, I don't care whether you're my friend for a month, a year, you're in this criteria, this is what you're going to get.
Hey, preach.
So, so it really helped us, it's, it's making us stronger.
Data and context has always been my, my question. And I came in at the very end, Ms. Palchek was talking about it, I potentially missed it, and so maybe it was answered. The question of when PD happens in a year, the, the when, is, is that being dovetailed into the calendar conversations that are being held?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. We're in the middle of it right now.
So for me, that's very, very crucial, because the frustration about how we build a calendar, how it makes sense, and when that professional development makes sense for educators, not necessarily because it's convenient, because historically there's always been a soccer tournament or something. That can't be the driving force of how we build our calendar. It has to be driving resources to the classroom for academic success. And so I hope that the, this is a very engaged group in the calendar building.
All right. I'm going to remind my colleagues, the entire presentation was supposed to be done by 3:15. So I, while I appreciate your comments, we have another presentation and another set of questions. So just be mindful of that. Yes, we have another session, another complete session, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Evans.
Thank you very much. As many of us have, have said, this is just an amazing project. It is so successful. It is really very, very exciting. We, we gave you many kudos at, at the board meeting when you presented it formally, and those of us who've had the opportunity to meet privately, this is just amazing. And I have to say, I'm very proud of Herndon Elementary School, and, and thank you very much for agreeing to come. And I'm very pleased to see that Hutchison is still on the, on the needs list, because both Hutchison and Herndon just have a lot of, of needs. And one of the things over time that we fought so hard to get was the embedded professional development. And I think you're proving how the instructional coaches and people coming in and working side by side in the classroom, as we've gone through so many budget wars. Those were often positions that people would say, no, you don't need them. And we'd say, yes, we do. Because there, there are times to front-load and work with teachers before school starts or when the, when school is into session. But the, the most effective help comes with the person standing next to you in the classroom, either modeling a lesson or coming with you to show it to you and to walk you through it. It takes four, five, six years to learn how to teach. If I had had this kind of help 50 years ago, maybe I would have stayed in the classroom. This is just so impressive. The, sort of the, going back to the old day of the areas, you know, before you all were born, we really did staff the areas as though they were many school divisions. And there were many more positions who could be placed into the schools. And over time, budgets that were tight, budgets that were not so tight, we, we kept looking for ways to, to be able to help and go into schools. But this is the model that I think works. And again, the fact that you are flexible, and all of the principals have said that, because your children change, even though some schools will have a run of high poverty, i.e. all needs, the children move, the families move. You can have in January, a set of families and kids that come in that all of a sudden just need so much. And it can upset the apple cart, and you need to have people come in and help you do that. So that flexibility is so critical. And, and the assumption that with a point system, it can occur in Fairfax County and a lot of different places, sometimes in places where you think it's not going to happen. So the acknowledgement that, that this kind of intensive help needs to be, needs to be there readily available for everybody. I do have one question on the slide, where high-yield instructional strategies, Hattie's research. If you could explain that, particularly the effect size of poverty, could you walk us through that? That is, that is a very interesting...
It's my favorite slide.
Yeah. Picture. I like that. I don't understand it. Would you please explain it?
I have this urge to stand up, but then I get yelled at because I'm not by the microphone. So I'm going to try and do this sitting down. So the effect size, if you look at just below 60% and right under 80%, kind of that triangle, that is what research...
Could you, could you stand up and point that? Because that's what I'm trying to figure out, what the delta is with this.
Right here. Okay. What research says is, that is the negative impact that poverty has on assessment. Okay? That, that's the effect size.
So does that mean 20, 20% or 20 points?
It's about 30%.
30%.
The range of about 20...
Yeah, you can take your microphone with you, but I need to have you... Yeah, you can take your microphone with you, but I need to have you actually show this with your hands, because this is really-
Okay, this is kind of exciting.
Because we talk about this, but this is a really nice graphic.
That is the effect size, and this is metadata. So this is, Hattie is one of the best-known educational researchers in the world. And basically, his research shows from analysis of multiple studies that the effect size of poverty is going to have, is going to have a negative effect of, from the 20% range all the way up to the 40% range in terms of a negative impact on student achievement. We always talk about relationships and how important that is. And the point of this slide is that if you just build good relationships with kids, you're almost not, you're just about even, right? And so we know that these kids need extra help and then we actually are trying to get a grade level and a half, the two grade levels a year advancement out of them. But we know that formative evaluation, building collaborative expertise, so that's that collaborative team, the whole PLC model, and having a really tight response to intervention program will actually, those are the three key drivers that will help counteract for poverty. So basically, the reason to have this slide is to show that if we do those things and do them really well, the research tells us that we can counteract for poverty. Again, it's not the end-all, be-all, it's one person, but he's based off of a lot of research. And those are the things that we're doing, and those are our three high-leverage strategies that we use, and we're seeing the effects of them on schools and our most, our schools that have the most poverty.
So in essence, your three strategies, teacher-student relationship, formative evaluation, building collaborative expertise in response to intervention, in other words, that would be the strategies.
Yeah, these are our top three, and of course, we always strive for teachers to build positive student relationships. Those are, those just happen, we use other ones, those just happen to be the three that really drive our work and drive, I think, the work of a lot of people in the room.
Right, well, let me, let me, one observation off of the, first of all, I would love to see a white paper or some analysis of the Hattie's research, because I think this is really very important. The other piece that, again, in Fairfax County, we believe that all children can succeed, we love our children, we love our teachers. It isn't as though people are uncaring, but it takes, I mean, what you are doing is project momentum. It's, it is taking such a granular look at what works in a classroom. And very often, people outside of the profession of teaching say, "You just have to believe it." No, you need more than just believing.
Hope is not a strategy.
Hope is not a strategy. There you go. And very often, that is what people will say, "Well, you need, you know, you need all these other hoppy things." But it is very particular teaching strategies that makes it work. And we have so much more research and we have been able to hang on to some of the people and staff that we've needed to do this. And I give you all a lot of credit because we've got, what, we've had nine difficult budgets in the last 10 years. And it has been really tough, but we have somehow managed to be able to develop this program and to be able to put the resources where they are truly needed, and it's paying off. So thank you for advocating for that and being able to show the research that really is critical to why this works. So I would like to read a little more about Hattie's research, please. Thank you.
I just want to throw a reiteration to the point about those high-yield strategies, and Tim said it right from the beginning, it's about that flexibility and being able to differentiate school to school. So those strategies all look different depending on the name and the need in the school. And that's one of the biggest, I think, drivers of the success.
That's right. Teaching is lovely, but it's very hard work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. We're going to have Ms. Evans followed by Mr. Moon.
First of all, thank you very much for all the data in this presentation. Again, as my colleagues have said, this is just marvelous work and, you know, we can see a real strong impact of the work that each and every one of you are doing. And I'll give a special tip of the hat to Poe Middle School, one of my schools. Principal Eck, thank you for being here, thank you for all of you being here, of course. But, you know, I look at Poe and I think about, Mr. Greenfelder, you mentioned high poverty there. There's also, I think, one of the highest English language learners in the county, and I think that's one thing that we need to realize when we're talking about impacts on the standards and need to get kids with different challenges over the bar. So you all are doing such phenomenal work and it's great to hear your individual stories about how that happened. I wanted to ask you about the new criteria on absenteeism that's coming down soon. Is that for next, starting next fall or two falls from now, the new state requirement to gauge chronic absenteeism?
It's actually potentially starting for next fall. We will get final, we will get a final determination on that in November. That is when the state board is voting on the, on the new processes. So we should know before the end of this year, and as many people know, the state often votes on something that we're going to be held accountable for in November or December and then lets us know down the road, and we're halfway through the school year. I know absenteeism is likely to be a part of that. I don't know how much it's going to count in the matrix. Those are the things that Betris Huffman is the expert at in our division and the person that I would ask, that is who I ask, she's in the back of the room. So once that information becomes official, which again, should be in November, I know that she'll have an update for the leadership team and certainly for you all as soon as that comes out, because anything that comes out, I would verify through her and her office to make sure that's going to be the new metrics. But I am fairly certain absenteeism is going to be a part of the overall matrix. So there's more components now that schools will be held accountable for, and it's going to be, you know, it's going to be some changes, you know. Michelle's brought up a great point, it's like if you change your point metrics, you know, you got to be careful because then you're not the old system, and we're going to kind of be forced to do that because it's going to be a different system and we're going to have to be really attuned to how we mesh those, but it definitely is going to be a change.
So the bar does keep changing, and in some ways, they have listened to us in terms of our advocacy to give some more flexibility in some ways, but this will add, I would think, of significant new wrinkle, particularly, have you been, have we been advocating, first of all, in terms of the-
Yeah, I think there's, we're pretty fortunate, there's no better advocate in the room than Dr. Braybrand. I've been pretty amazed within a short time, he's affected some pretty major things from how we're affected with ESOL and different things. So he has a direct pipeline to the big state boss and he lets him know when things aren't right. So I think that's definitely had an impact, so we'll see if they take it.
Are we already starting to prepare for, for having, for looking at chronic absenteeism as a factor?
Yes, that's a discussion that we have at leadership team and at our ALG group about what are we going to do when that comes out. We're just trying to find out what the, what the metrics are. Once they come up with the metrics, and I know Teresa Johnson will be leading that effort, that's kind of in her shop, so she'll know that and know what strategies we're going to put in place to take care of that.
Okay, because that may change your list.
The state superintendent has said chronic absenteeism, when you overlay that into Virginia school systems, you're going to get some schools that you would never expect to pop up, are going to pop up. So, you know, we're waiting for them to give us the parameters, yet you can say chronic absenteeism, what, what does it look like? How are they defining it? And I think they've come up with the definition, right, whether it's, is it excused or unexcused? It's both, right? It doesn't matter whether it's excused or unexcused, that's one of the big nuggets. So there are some schools where the rate is actually high, but parents excuse the absences and it has a lower number when you only look at unexcused. So we're about to get the final thing from the state within a month, we're going to run that through and we'll be prepared to update you all as appropriate when we have that final matrix.
Well, and this relates, I think, you know, we had had our conversation about mobility as well, and I appreciate you putting a reference to mobility in the documents that you gave us. I, I think we, when you, when you talk about mobility, as you know, that's one of the things that the school board has asked to take a look at and the impact. If you looked at mobility, would you have a similar chart to this as to the impact?
Absolutely. So the, most of our work is based, so when you look at many of the schools that are challenged, where a lot of this research comes, they're high poverty, high mobility, high ESOL, they have all those factors involved. And I think in the next presentation, there is a small section on mobility that Betris Huffman put together that's really good, that will show a definition and have a little piece of that. So she heard that concern and made sure that there was a piece of that in there.
That is something that our, you know, as we said, is Mrs. Corbett Sanders and I said the other day at the forum, it's something that we as a board have not really had a conversation on the impact of mobility. And as you know, for some of our schools, that really does have a huge impact. And I would push back a little bit because I know there are some very high mobility schools that are not on your list for either targeted or intensive. And so somehow, they've, they're just not on there. You know, I have some in my district that, that aren't on either of your lists, but, so I look forward to that conversation as well. And just lastly, I would say, I'm glad to see that even when schools have been fully accredited, that you're still sticking with them. And, you know, when you know that they, they still need a little bit of extra help, and I hope that's, that's welcome. So thank you all.
All right, we have Mr. Moon followed by Mr. McAvoy.
Mr. Narcoflex, thank you. Do you know what time we're supposed to be done with this portion of the discussion today?
Well, we had two hours budgeted, so we started at 2:20. Ms. Schultz told me.
So 4:20.
So it was 4:20 we were supposed to be done. We will take a break probably at 4:20 and then come back for the second portion, which is academic performance update. There's a second part. It's a separate presentation.
So we do not necessarily, I do not necessarily have a 20 minutes to ask a question.
You do not, sir.
Okay, I'll try to do it within the next two, three minutes then.
Quick, quick.
Mr. Greenfelder and I had a wonderful conversation on Friday. I was probably one of the last board members for him to meet with, and I wanted to delay that meeting until the very last moment so that I could have that fresh on my mind as we went into a work session today. So with that in mind, thank you for the presentation, thank you for all the information you have provided, and thank you to the three wonderful principals, you know, who are here, that was, who are working, who have been working so hard for their respective scores. My question comes from, probably wouldn't surprise you, based upon our conversation on Friday, and, you know, you could respond in broad terms where, and our principals could jump in and share with me some specific specifics. And looking at slide number 29 through 31, you don't necessarily have to go back, I'm looking at, you know, kinds of support your office is providing, the areas of support, where the supports are going in, et cetera. But, Mr. Greenfelder, you and I will agree on this point that one of the pillars of a success of our student achievement has to do with family support, you know, what we provide at home. So your work does not necessarily, at least from the presentation provided thus far, at least does not mention anything about what we do with the family. We are trying to, your work tried to build up the capacity of teachers and administrators in buildings. What about the other important pillar? How do we build up the capacity of the family to be able to help their children in probably a better way or different ways?
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to let the principals talk a little bit about specifics and let Brendan, I think when we talked, I really didn't do that justice, and we did agree on the point, it is critical, and we know we can do a tremendous job in cutting the achievement gap and those kind of things and improving performance if we can get families more engaged. And we also have a great office that's led by Kathleen Walts that, who does a phenomenal job, and they're working on outreach and building partnerships. And so I don't want to speak for her or misspeak for her because we have an entire office that does that, and that's part of their responsibility. So I just want to have our folks talk about the specifics they're doing, and I think they'll be able to add a lot more to the conversation that I wasn't able to, when I should have been able to articulate some things probably better with you, but I didn't do as good a job as I should.
You did a great job.
So let me let them, let me let them talk about it.
We've been thinking about the same thing at Herndon. And one thing that we did this year was we pulled in kindergarten, rising kindergarten parents in at the end of last school year, and we taught, talked to them about how they could help their students and what the expectation is when they arrive in kindergarten. Some of our families come from different cultures where they don't, you don't necessarily have to prepare your children for school, they go to school and then they learn, depending on the country that they're from. And so what we wanted to do was to help the families understand the expectation of what the US educational system kind of expects for kindergarteners to be able to come in and know their letters and, and do some basic things. So we did that and we gave them the, some, some training and some supplies that they could take home and work with their children at home, and we're going to analyze that to see if it had an impact. So that's, that's what we're really interested in. In addition to that, we bring families in, in first grade, second grade, for literature nights to help them, and also for math nights, so that we can show them what they can do to help their children succeed. So those are two of the things we've done.
So I'm going to think of this in three tiers for me. So the first one is our parent liaison, so thank you, because our parent liaison happens to be full-time this year. And so she works really hard to sort of bring those families into the school to volunteer and to be part of the school community. Then we have our, sort of our tier-two programs, when we actually do target families, so we have reunification parent meetings to sort of get those kids that are new to the country, but their parent have been here, to how do they work together as a family. We also have this unique parent program that we run twice a year, it's six nights, and we do two groups, and it's American, it's Hispanic parents raising American children, and that's the name of it. And so we talk to our families about what that looks like. And actually, Dr. Zalaga, who left, he has been our keynote speaker one of those nights because he talks to them about that famous cellphone and what, you know, what that means to have that cellphone, and we talk a lot about media literacy with them. But we also talk to them about, you know, their goal was to come here to America, and so they're here and checked, they made it. So we want to widen their dreams. We want to say, "Well, there's more to that dream than just getting here. Now that you're here, let us show you what the other possibilities are." So we work with, with those families. Usually, it's capped at 25 families, and we managed to fill two of those sessions. So we had 50 families. We would love to do more of it, but it's a little bit costly. And then, of course, we have that tier-three support for us, which is, we have a partnership with Northern Virginia Family Services, and those, and that group really helps us with students that really need intensive targeted support and their family needs support as well.
Again, I keep referring to the two-school approach. The first move, when we got, when I got to Bucknell, I borrowed it from another principal, all credit due to the other great experts in the county, is to build a place for parents to come, a place that feels safe. And I'm not an expert on immigration or anything to that end, but my observations have been that, you know, families are coming here, taking huge risks to seek something that they perceive is better for their kids. And, you know, they're sacrificing and they come, and then they defer. They recognize the school as a place of authority, of competence, they also recognize there's a language barrier, they don't feel that it's their position or place to come into the school and feel that they can advocate or have a voice. So at Bucknell and also at Cameron, the first move we made was to create an accessible parent center. It's just a classroom, but it has a name, and it's a, it's a place for you to come in and access someone who says, "You know, I'm expecting you, I'm glad you're here, let's talk." That tends to be the parent liaison. And I will tell you, one difference that I have from Bucknell to Cameron, even though Bucknell was a smaller school, the circumstances permitted me to use- to use, essentially the Title I budget that I had was so small that I just had to put it somewhere. And I said, I'm putting it all into parent liaison work. And I happen to have one of the best in the county. She was, she's amazing. She's still supporting the county for parent liaison work. And that's not to say anything about the current parent liaison I have at Cameron, but the way the resources have sort of played out, I'm not able to have her come, bring her talents and expertise to bear. She's hourly. And so we kind of have two classes now. I'm so grateful that we have contracted parent liaisons. I'm an advocate for the parent liaison work. I think they do incredible work. They ought to be experts. We ought to have people that know what this area, it almost is like it needs to be an endorsement and a teacher who's handling it or something. Because it's such a huge issue. And right now, I feel like we probably don't put a whole lot of resources into it as a county when the proportion of need and the proportion of resources that we're able to put into it, I know it's a zero-sum game and we've got to put our money where we've got to put it. But this one, I feel like we really, it would benefit our students and our families if there was a lot of resources put into the parent liaison position and everything else that comes with it, including the parent center, the programming that flows out from it, the invitation to have, you know, parents come in. There's just so much that we were able to do at Bucknell. I would love to be able to do at Cameron. I'm working on it and we're going to try to get there. But however we might be able to facilitate that. I mean, we're doing parent coffees. We're trying to pick topics that make sense to parents, have them come in and learn, how can they facilitate and advocate for their kids? The bridge decay, I have to give a nod to that. It's a big deal. The bridge decay makes a huge difference. There's a huge gap. When we talk about why do kids show up and our teachers seem to not know what to do with them, it's because they show up with an incredible lack of background knowledge that we oftentimes would assume they would have. I mean, I, I'm not kidding. I observed a little one who saw his name written for the first time. He saw it written for the first time. Somebody else wrote it and he didn't know what it was. It was his name. And so they got to go from there to be ready for first grade, which is reading at a DRA four or a six, if you're really, you know, aggressive. It's just a lot. And so any of the resources that the county can bring to bear, we would certainly put to use. We're trying to use whatever we have at the school level to make a difference for kids, especially at the parent level. I'm a parent center advocate and whatever programming we can put together through there, we do. We have the typical parent evenings and we reach out to our translators to try to make a difference and invite folks in. But I'm a parent center, parent liaison advocate. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to it.
So in addition to those particular things, our office, OSS, has worked with IS to make sure that our intensive schools and hopefully some of our targeted, depending on the funding, are identified for bridge decay, for young scholar summer programs. We fund it through OSS and help support and plan for family literacy nights, the family math nights, summer library events, to keep that learning alive in the summer. So for example, one of our math resource teachers was at a school. They wanted to start a math night for their families to teach their parents how to teach math or reinforce math at home. And our folks helped with those teams to plan for that event, to teach games to the parents, which is a little bit of a different kind of teaching style, but our folks are embedded with that work as well. We help fund Saturday academies and the early literacy and family literacy programs. So we, from just off the top of our head today, we realize we support Arabic, Spanish and Korean at some of our different targeted and intensive schools where they're teaching literacy to the parents and to the little guys before they come to school. We also have funded extra hours for parent liaisons for the intensive schools if they've asked for that. And we've helped also with the Title I budget. So all the intensive Title I budgets have to be approved by us and all Title I budgets have to include a family engagement component. So that's, that's part of the federal dollars going to work. And then we're saying, I don't know if that's a great idea. Maybe let's, let's help you think of something else. And we've done that with our schools too.
You know, thank you, thank you for, you know, giving us a specific examples of what the schools are doing and what your office is doing from the central level. I know probably I'll be used to more than my allotted time. But I just want to, you know, point out again to my colleagues and superintendent, along with building principals, that, and how passionate, how important I feel about this issue is that we need to have a little more time to continue have this conversation. And I would love to ask our superintendent to let me as one board member to know so that I can, you know, if I choose to, to do my own advocacy to not only with my colleagues, but also our funding authority and also members in the community, that if you had a wish list, if you had a wish list in this area, what would be on the list? Are the schools doing everything they want to do? Or as you said, because we are limited by the resources, you know, these things you see from your perspective as principal of your building, knowing the needs of your student body and parents and then families, these are things that I would love to be able to do, but I cannot. What would be on the list? I would love to see that. So I, as a part of this governing body, policymaking body, to consider and if I want to, make the proposal to my colleagues to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Mr. McElveen.
So some of the conversation earlier, I wanted to just clarify. You know, there was talk about the removal of the science SOL and the perverse incentives that has led to. I'm, I want to make sure no one leaves today with thinking that you're advocating that we should stop the pullback on SOLs. Okay. Because the board has spent the better part of the last decade working on it. And so that leads me into my second question. Next month, we are very quickly launching into our legislative program discussions. Obviously Scott and Mark have done a great job building relationships with Steve at the state level and the board. But is there anything you want us to advocate to our, to the legislature that might have come out of your work?
It's really just funding. It's real, it's funding to support the work that we know needs to be done. And I don't know how you do that specifically. I think Dr. Lockhart and Dr. Braybrant do a great job of listening to all of us and representing our views and letting you guys know what we, you know, what would be helpful to us. So is there, if there's anything specific, I, it would be hard for me to pin that down right here. I just say, you know, we talk about expanding this type of work and other things. It just comes down to people and being able to get the best people and provide the best embedded PD that we can.
Okay, because, I mean, I know a lot of our legislators ask us what's, and we'll certainly share this work with them. I think they'll be impressed. But it will just feed into our argument that we need more funding for this work.
Ms. Kies-Gamara.
All right, well, first of all, thank you. I am, had an opportunity to meet with you and really grateful for that. I'm really being introduced to this program and been very impressed. And forgive me if when I stepped out, some of this was covered, but you know, it looks like you guys are kind of like the emergency room for schools, the trauma center, you know? When things are really bad, you step in and do what needs to happen and that's pretty amazing. But I'm wondering if we've had an opportunity to take some steps to spread that information around and to people you're not necessarily working with where they can do their own evaluations to kind of, you know, know what the warning signs are, you know? Hey, we're about to slip. This looks like a slip and fall. This looks like a serious car accident, you know, in the equivalent of education. And then even being able to point out to them, you know, if you see these warning signs, then what are some of the practices that you can implement? And I also want, as a second part, to join my colleague, Mr. Moon, in that, you know, these are the kinds of things that I think most people don't know are happening. And these are the kinds of things that I think most people in our community, if they really understood this kind of work, they would have no problem funding our schools. And so anything that we can do or that I can do, I join Mr. Moon. I think we should be able to help to get that message out. And so I would love to collaborate with, you know, our superintendent as well as you as to how best to do that. So two parts to my comments.
Well, I appreciate it. So on the, I'll start with the second part. We just need to keep doing a great job and having a great success story to tell. And I think as long as we can keep doing that and getting schools accredited and work on, you know, gaps in the next work that we have to take care of, we're going to be able to help you with that story and certainly help Dr. Braybrant. The first part, I think, is a little more complex and I'm just going to answer it briefly. But we're, Office of Schools, we're not creating anything new and spectacular. So we've pulled a lot of best practices from around the country, from previous FCPS initiatives and put them into kind of a soup. That's our recipe. A lot of that work, we work in collaboration with DSS, with ISD. So we're all working as a team. And so anything that we do can be extrapolated out and it is being extrapolated out in other schools by other, other parts of the staff. So I don't want people to think, you know, we have all the answers or we're working in isolation. We really do work collaboratively. I think it becomes a resource issue. And, you know, to, I don't want to go down this road too far, but, you know, the science issue, I'm very fortunate. I get to have two science people on my team. Two. Sloan has one, okay, from a resource initiative. And he's trying to help 100-plus schools and I've got the smaller ones. So those people are killing themselves and that becomes a resource issue. So I don't want people to think that, you know, we have, and those two, those two groups work very closely together to create systemic professional development for our schools. They work to plan quarterly training days for teachers. They're coming up with some new work about how we can better prepare schools for, just for teaching science in general. So they're working really hard. It just becomes a resource issue. So I think why, you know, what we like to do is take the work that they've done and other people have done and just bring it down to a really tight level in getting back to that PD. We're in the schools every day with our experts. So that's how we're able to turn things around a little bit quicker instead of one or two, three, or three, you know, professional development days, they don't even get that many per year in a certain, in a certain area. So I think your question is the one that Dr. Braybrant has challenges with is how do we expand some of these processes so we can be more proactive and so we can affect a lot of different schools? And I agree with you 100%. It's, it's kind of a funding and a resource allocation issue. And we're working on that diligently as a leadership team. We have a project momentum meeting every month where we share those best practices out and take other best practices from the other offices and work together. So know that we're doing that work and I think we'll have more to share in the second half of this year as we really try to figure out a better plan to move some of this work out.
So I just want to clarify, I'm hoping to, at some point that we're, we can move to preventative measures as opposed to going to the emergency room.
That's exactly what we're trying to do and we're hoping to make that shift next year.
I haven't spoken yet, so I'll speak. And then Ms. Corbett Sanders, you have, you're good with your go back? Okay. No, we're getting to it. We are, yes, yes, yes. Thank you all and thank you all for being here. And I really appreciate the principals being here and giving us, you know, context for the specifics of how you implement, implement these strategies. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Somebody mentioned bridge decay. How many schools is that in now?
That's probably a question for somebody in the back. I don't have the exact number. I don't know.
I can get the information for you.
Yeah, I think that's important to know. When I sat on the Childcare Advisory Council, oh boy, 11 years ago, that's when bridge decay first started and it was in six or seven schools. And I know it isn't everywhere where it needs to be, but that's where we need to go. We need, as you're saying, that it's so impactful in so many ways because you get the opportunity to kind of prescreen what your needs are and then work with them. And so that's, that's really important. I appreciate the program that you talked about, Hispanic parents raising American children. I think that's wonderful and that's another, it sounds like a successful program that we could extrapolate and put in many different schools so people understand. I, I, you know, represent and I've had children go to very diverse schools, my children in very diverse schools. And sometimes you see the parents struggling and I think they need a roadmap. They need a roadmap to understand and I don't think we have that in all schools. I'm also interested, Ms. Strauss asked the question about the Hattie on page 37, that if we can get more information on that because there are, as you said, that's one opinion and there are tipping point studies that, you know, say different things about what we need to do and what the needs are and how much poverty in a school is sustainable, particularly at a high school level before. Wow, it's, it's just so insurmountable that we, we're, no matter what we throw at it, it's not going to be as successful as another school with lessons. And Mr. Moon, I appreciate your passion and I think, and Ms. Gamara, Kies-Gamara, I really appreciate your wanting to do that. I, I have to say, I do think though, people are aware of this, I can say very specifically, as I was chairman of this board, I spoke about it extensively, you know that. I asked you to just talk about it when you were chair and I was vice chair. We've talked, I talked specifically last year about funds needed to counteract the effects of poverty, the different kinds of poverty we have. We have generational, we have newcomer poverty, plus all of the needs of so many different, these children. So I believe our funding bodies know and understand this, but I don't believe we should stop banging the drum because they have heard it, but they haven't enacted upon it. And I've talked to, I've talked to every single person in our state delegation about it. How, you know, the, the, no, 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 the, I can't think of the name. The thing that allocates money back from Richmond. LCI, LCI, the LCI. And how that does not account for the deep pockets of poverty we have. There has been nothing done. I think some people put it in, it hasn't gotten out of committee. So this board has to, absolutely has to maintain that passion, talk about it because these issues do exist. People know they exist, but because as an aggregate, we are very successful, they don't always get addressed. And it is extremely important that we deal with this. And Dr. Braybrant, I know you and I have had several conversations about this and how different programmatic things that I would like to see instituted. So thank you for just the success that you've had so far. I appreciate your energy and your passion and, and just congratulations on where we are. As you said, we're not where we need to be. And as soon as they, as soon as you get yourself out of a job, Mr. Greenfelder, we're going to find another one for you. But we thank you so much for what you've done. And with that, this, this portion is closed. We will do the second part of agenda item number three, academic performance and update after a brief break.